Good evening, I have seven o'clock and I'll call a meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you Mayor, Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Tom Schmitz.
Present.
And Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum Mayor.
Thank you. So this evening it appears we have no ministers available to lead us in prayer, so we will have a moment of silence here. Amen. So please join me in a pledge allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with authority and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is determine agenda additions. Are there any additions for the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. So in addition to minutes of March 18th regular city council meeting, the consent agenda includes petitions and resolutions for Phase Two improvements in Sunflower Commerce Park, third edition. The resolution authorizes the improvements outlined in the petitions, the costs associated with these improvements will be bonded and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. Any discussion or questions concerning this consent agenda? If there are all none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. David. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
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 John, did you vote? Are you there, John?
I'm here, but I can't get my video working.
Okay, well I hear you now, so did you vote?
No, I did not vote.
On the consent agenda, would you like?
Put me down as aye.
Okay, thank you sir. That motion carries five to zero. Discussion approval appropriations ordinance. So this appropriation ordinance encompasses expenses from March 13th through March 25th and one payroll cycle. Expenditures amounted $605,000 and some money, some change. Other reported expenses, $228,631 are infrastructure costs for new developments, and those costs were paid through special assessments. So any questions or discussion of the appropriations ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we approve appropriation ordinance number 25-06.
Motion by Mr. Dean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero. This evening we have three requested appearances. The first one is Marky Jones from WAMPO, community planner, and that's Metropolitan Transportation Plan 2050, also known as MTP 2050. So, Ms. Jonas.
Thank you so much for having us this evening.
Please speak into the microphone because this is recorded.
Okay, I will do my best. Well, good evening, thank you for having us. I'm here with my coworker Nick Flanders from the Wichita area Metropolitan Planning Organization to talk about our long-range metropolitan transportation plan, or MTP 2050. We have a video to start off. There normally is sound, so I will leave that. For those who would like to can go back and watch it later on. Jumping ahead just to say, what is WAMPO? WAMPO, or the Wichita area Metropolitan Planning Organization, is the MPO for the Wichita metropolitan region. MPOs are federally required regional policy bodies in urbanized areas with populations over 50,000. Our planning boundary includes 22 cities and three counties in south-central Kansas. That does, of course, include Bel Air. It is all of Cedric County and portions of Butler and Sumner Counties, and we conduct both long-range and short-range transportation planning. We are currently in the final stages of the planning process for the federally required long-range metropolitan transportation plan, or MTP, which covers a planning horizon of at least 20 years and is updated every five years. WAMPO's new metropolitan transportation plan, called MTP 2050, has a planning horizon of 25 years and will guide the development and improvement of the transportation network. And we are currently in our fourth round of public engagement, which is also our public comment period for the draft plan. So the draft is available for review and comment through April 7. A few more details about the plan. The goals are to set priorities for transportation improvements throughout the region, including safety, reliable travel times, managing environmental and economic impacts, creating more equitable transportation system, and improving connectivity for all modes of travel. And then it lists projects to potentially utilize available funding. The complete document includes seven chapters and 14 appendices. There's a lot of detail in this document. There's also an executive summary, which is much shorter, and that is available in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese. I will now turn things over to Nick to give some more details about the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Marky. Nick?
Thank you, Marky. The vision of MTP 2050 is to enhance connectivity in a way that supports equitable development of a safe, reliable, multimodal transportation network that enhances the quality of place within the WAMPO region. This vision is supported by the goals of making things safe and reliable, equitable and accessible, connected and multimodal, and engaging in environmental and financial stewardship. As mentioned, the plan has seven chapters and 14 appendices. Although the appendices are up on the slide right now, I will not go through each of them individually, but I will go briefly through the seven chapters. Chapter one, Plan Purpose and Development. That basically explains the purpose of the plan and how we went about creating it over the last few years. Chapter two, Regional Trends. This is a data-driven chapter, all about showing current conditions in the region and past trends that have led up to those and projected future conditions resulting from them. Chapter three goes in much the same vein, very data-driven, all about distinguishing what are the current conditions and projected future conditions, this time with greater focus on transportation more specifically than in chapter two. Chapter four, System Management, is all about different ways that the traffic and transportation and need for transportation are managed throughout the region and could be potentially in the future. Chapter five, System Performance Report. This is where you will find performance measures. That is data points that can be tracked over time in order to measure progress towards meeting various goals. This includes required federal performance measures that all metropolitan planning organizations are required to track, but also some regional performance measures that were created just for the WAMPO region and are not federally required. Chapter six, Financial Plan. This chapter is all about showing how the plan is fiscally constrained. That is, the projected cost of everything that is called for in it does not exceed the amount of revenue projected during the same period going out to the year 2050. And finally, chapter seven, Project Selection and List. This is where you will find a list of specific transportation projects in the region that by being in this list, in this plan, may be eligible for inclusion in our Short Range Transportation Improvement Program and potentially considered for funding opportunities going forward. In addition to many individual projects that got onto this list at the request of our member jurisdictions through a call for projects in 2023 and 2024, there are also what we call category projects, because there are some projects of such a nature that they cannot be predicted many years in advance. So it's not all like the North Junction, for example. This includes projects such as public transit projects, bicycle and pedestrian improvements, bridge projects, intelligent transportation system projects, and traffic flow and safety projects. Projects of this sort are in there in these categories so that any project within those categories may necessarily get into our short-range planning documents and be considered for funding going forward in light of the fact that they're not planned decades in advance. We have had a couple of opportunities for public engagement, and we have a couple more meetings similar to this one to various bodies throughout the region, but already what we had was a virtual public meeting that we have a recording of online at the URL that you see there, and also I believe accessible through our MTP website along with the rest of the plan at www.wampo.org/mtp2050. We also had an open house on Wednesday, March 26. And during this event, it was a come and go event where members of anyone from the public could come in and see poster boards about the plan and ask members of WAMPO staff about the plan. And we do have plans to upload copies of those poster boards to the same webpage in addition to all of the chapters and appendices. And we please, 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 during the remaining time until our public comment period ends on April 7th, just six days from now, that everyone here and everyone you know and everyone that they know and so on and so forth, review the plan at WAMPO.org/mtp2050 and get your comments into us either through the comment field on that webpage. And although there is a field for providing name and email address, there is no requirement to provide that information, so you have the option to only provide the comment. And you also may provide comments by email to WAMPO@WAMPO.org. That should be fairly easy to remember. So before I turn it over for questions or the next agenda item, Marky, do you have anything to add or correct?
I don't think so. Thank you for having us.
Okay then, thank you all for having us, and are there any questions before I get back to the floor?
I do.
Yes.
So, in general, I mean, you're looking at 2050 from today, so 25 years you're trying to scope out. So is there a generic plan that says you're going to continue to expand the envelope of reach as the suburbs keep growing? Is that just natural, or is there some, is there anything that's in your plan now that you're aware of that is unusual or unexpected, that you might think would be unexpected?
Well, first of all, MTPs are required to be updated every five years minimum. So we have, so that is built in from the start. So if something, if something comes up, then we can react to it. And we also have as appendix C, appendix C, MTP Amendment Procedures. So there are, so we do have a process that where the MTP could be amended if need be. For example, if a new big project had to get into the document in order to proceed, so that, or, or stuff like, or stuff like that. And also there are options for administrative adjustments. Now, an amendment, an amendment has a bit of a longer process involving more of a public engagement process and a more formalized process for getting an amendment proposed, but administrative adjustment is a bit simpler. It still requires a vote by our governing body, but it's, those can be done fairly simply that, and for that, it would be, for example, moving a project up from a later time band to an earlier time. I say if there was an opportunity for a project to go forward earlier than was anticipated when this plan was put together, it can be moved up from the later time band to the earlier time band so that it could proceed in that way. So yes, we have, we have methods in place for reacting to this kind of stuff, and of course, we do have, within the MPO region, let's call the, let's call the urban area boundary, which gets updated after the decennial census every 10 years. And that figures into some of our planning, but that is something that we keep track of. So, yeah, does that answer your questions?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I was just curious how that would work, so, thank you.
As you probably know, I serve on the NTV board, and so I see Nick and Marky at least once a month, and I try to give you some input from what's going on. They did give you the, the website address at the bottom of the back of this flyer that was handed out to each of the council members, so please feel free to avail yourself of that. And if there are any other questions for Nick or Marky, if not, I thank you for coming and presenting, and we'll see you next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Next we have Mr. Greg Dane, who is the president of Bel Air Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you Mayor, y'all can hear me. Before I get into our numbers tonight, I just wanted to share a few brief thoughts on what I feel like a reason why I think the city is important to the chamber and the chamber is important to the city, probably not done a good enough job of this recently.
Is he speaking?
I spent most of my career in pharmaceuticals. And believe it or not, collecting that and wanting that started with Greenhorn Pharmaceuticals. One of the things they stress to us, when we shared the features and benefits of our products with our doctors, was to finish the conversations by always adding this verbiage. What this means to your patients, doctor, is. So, using that analogy, I thought I would share a couple of reasons why this is a great relationship between the two of us. Let me just say from the outset, I'm an East Wichita refugee that the chamber welcomed in three years ago, and I thoroughly enjoyed my time. I love smaller groups. And I think if you've had the chance to attend, and we invite everyone here to attend, our next meeting actually is tomorrow at 11:30 in the planning room. But it's been great for me just to get to know people in the community. So, want to give you three quick reasons why this relationship works. If you think about the increased visibility to potential new residents and businesses who are actively looking for a new home, did you know that the two main events that we host every year, and I'll get into those a little bit later, literally draw thousands of people to the Bel Air community? Think about it. They could be current Bel Air residents, they could be people on the periphery that may be looking to place their business or call Bel Air home. Number two, each month we come together as residents and business owners to promote Bel Air, and we offer interesting speakers who often address issues that we face on a daily basis, like the K254 corridor issues. So what does this mean to Bel Air? We get to network with other business owners in the community, and sometimes new ideas spring forth to help our community. An example of this is the Bel Air Breeze, where we can advertise our businesses, and again, promoting businesses in the Bel Air community proper. And we realize this is a bedroom community, and there's a lot of small businesses on the, businesses on the periphery that we try to canvas. Just so you all know, myself and other board members have a list as we speak, and we're literally door knocking, trying to encourage businesses both in and around Bel Air to be a part of this community. Three, through social media, specifically our Facebook page, we can, we can reach those who may be, again, considering Bel Air as a base for their business. Just quickly, did you guys even know we had a Facebook page? Anybody? Not going to ask you to raise your hands, but just think about going home tonight after the meeting or sometime tomorrow, just searching Bel Air Chamber of Commerce. I would encourage you to like our posts and make comments. People pay attention to that. Right now, as of today, we have 261 followers, okay? So think about that and work with us and engage with us on that effort. Again, commenting and showing your interest in our city is going to benefit everyone. We're not simply an organization you fund each year from the general budget. We are your partners. So I ask on behalf of the rest of the board, come alongside us to help promote the chamber and your daily city functions. Shouldn't it be your civic duty as well? So please come see us, see for yourself by attending our monthly meeting tomorrow in the community room, and I appreciate you indulging me for those brief comments. So on to the numbers. This is not, so the first number I'm going to share is our membership update. This is not a number I'm proud of, and we should strive to do better. Currently, we have 26 paid members for this calendar year. In my opinion, given the size of this community, that should be double or triple that when you look at other chambers around the area. Our current balance is 16,000, this was as of last week, $16,096.98. Almost half of that will be, a check will be written in the next couple of weeks for our Spring Festival and Easter egg hunt. And again, if you have not attended, please come out. If you want to watch five, six, seven, eight-year-olds wipe out 9,000 eggs in about 10 minutes, it's a joy just to watch them get on the soccer fields and take part in that event. Onto the next item, open board position. This is very critical. We still have an opening for vice president. I was vice president last year and president this year. If we don't have someone assume that position for the remainder of the calendar year, guess what? There's no president of the Bel Air Chamber next year. And if Gary O'Neil was here, I know Gary has, has held down that, that title for probably at least four different terms. So if you have colleagues, really, if you have friends and colleagues in the communities that you think would serve as a good VP to come along and side and partner with me, that would be great, and have them reach out to me. Okay, so upcoming speakers. Tomorrow, actually, is going to be a great agenda for us. Trooper Chad Crittenen from Troop F will be speaking to us about what goes on behind the scenes at the Kansas Highway Patrol. Chad has been with the patrol for 23 years and the last 10 years served as the resource officer. So come out and join us for that. In May, how many of you besides myself are pickleballers? Anybody? Okay, you might not know this name, but this gentleman actually participated in the senior games a couple of years ago in Pittsburgh. His name is David New. He's actually a Hayesville resident. He's 75 years old. He could probably beat the pants off everybody in this room, including me, in a pickleball match. But Dave has led the effort throughout Wichita in growing pickleball in both middle and high school, as well as at the senior level. So I think he's going to be a great addition to our speaker agenda. In June, Kelly Hursett from K254 Corridor Project will be speaking. Bonus that day, Credit Union of America will actually be our lunch sponsor, and this is something that we're actively focusing on right now to encourage businesses that want to be a part of the chamber to sponsor our lunch, and we're not talking about an exuberant budget. You're talking about feeding right now. Tomorrow, we've got 12 signed up. I'd like to see that personally grow to 20 to 30 per month, and I think we've got the ability to do that. Upcoming events. I'm going to dial back a couple of weeks. Most recently, we had a mixer at Tap and Paddle. If you don't know where Tap and Paddle is, if you're headed north on Oliver and you make a right on 35th, it looks like a construction building, but it's the newest pickleball venue in the area. We have talked to them about becoming members. They actually have a full restaurant there, and the food is great, right Tyler? So we had an event there, a lot of good exchanges. Our Spring Fest is coming up April 12th at the Rex Center. That will be from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. If you have desire to come out and help us spread around 9,000 Easter eggs prior to, please help yourself and come help us. July 10th will be our next mixer at 4:30 in the afternoon. help us. July 10th will be our next mixer at 4:30 in the afternoon at Napoli's. Our Fall Fest is October 18th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Newly renamed as of last year, Christmas in Bel Air, December 6th here at City Hall from 5:30 to 7:30. If you didn't come last year, you missed it because Santa is the real deal. Chamber Christmas Mixer will be December 11th from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. Again, we're going to be hosting that at Shepherd's Crossing. Again, I'm just going to make an appeal. Please consider partnering with us. Come get involved. Those of you in the audience tonight, if you haven't had a chance to come out and meet us, please do. With that, I will entertain questions and if you have no questions, anybody? I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Ken Lee from Garver Engineering to update us on 45th Street Design and 53rd Street Sidewalk Project. Mr. Lee?
Good evening and thank you for having me here this evening. I've got these two projects and I'll, when I get done with these first couple, I've got a couple others I'll just kind of run through that we're working on as well, just to get everybody updated. But I didn't do a presentation tonight, but 45th Oliver, the Woodlawn Project, the field check plans have been submitted to KDOT. They were submitted on March 27th. Some stuff we worked on before we got those turned in is we had met with PEC and they'd done a geotechnical investigation on the projects and so they had made recommendations on under drains along the route. And so, we met with Ann and PEC a couple of different times and put together plans, had them review them and such. So, that was one of the things we're working on. But we are on that project incorporating an under drain system for pretty much underneath the curbs on both sides for the full length of the project. The project is currently scheduled to bid on February 2020, or in February 27th. That's based on WAMPO funding availability. So, we're two years out from having plans bid. Ann is asking for us to get the plans done sooner than that in case funding does come available of some other sort. So, with us having field check plans, those should be ready to bid sometime next year in 2026 if other funding was to come available. But right now, the project is currently scheduled for that. We have been meeting with utility companies and working on our coordination on that. We're going to be doing, at some point, you'll see Badger excavation on the project. We'll be doing hydroexing for probably a couple of days. We've been waiting with utilities to determine the conflicts that we'll need to do that hydro excavation on. The primary one that we've had the most concern with is Southern Star. They have a very large pipeline that runs along the north side there. We've got multiple crossings with our storm sewer systems and they've been really great to work with. They did have one asked that what we're considering right now is at 45th and Oliver itself, we had shifted the roundabout to the north. If you recall, we had recommended moving it to the north and that would allow us for construction, you could construct the north half clear of the existing intersection and then also it improved the geometry through that intersection where it's not as aggressive a turn. They're asking us to pull that back south. And the reason is, is their line gets a little bit further south as it crosses that intersection and they don't want to be underneath the pavement with that main just because of concerns of, you know, traffic vibrations and such above it. So, they're asking us to move it south. And I asked them how much it would cost to relocate it and they didn't give me an exact price, but they said somewhere in the range of $1 million. And so, because that line is in a private easement, the city would be obligated to pay the relocation expense if they decided that they needed to do that. And so, Ann is having us evaluate what it would look like if we shift it. We want to, for field check, we're going ahead and getting that process, keeping that moving forward. But we will be looking at that as far as moving it. And it's not a significant move. It's only like 10 to 15 feet move south. So, it'll still be north of where it would have been if we'd have left it centered, but just not as far north as we would have liked. But we're looking at that because for a million dollars, it's probably worth moving it 10 or 15 feet. We've been working with the city of Wichita. They gave us a, under our own call with them, to do the sidewalk design between Stuckey and 45th and Oliver. We've got a preliminary plan put together for that. That's not scheduled to go to construction until the remainder of the project though, but they wanted to go ahead and get that going. So, we're working on that. And the city is going to work with the school district and maybe Bel Air and maybe other property owners about how to pay for that. But it'll probably, that portion of the walk will be primarily USD 259 and city of Wichita to pay for that portion west of our project. But they're on board with the idea of tying our project into Stuckey on 45th. But given that's a longer window on that work, we've also been talking a little bit and Mr. Dean's kind of been spearheading that, some discussions with the school district and some folks that know folks at Coke about doing a connection from Willow Point across Oliver and over into Stuckey, that route through the middle of the Eagles Landing Edition. And there's just preliminary discussion so far. They're still talking to folks to do that. But Mr. Dean, he values the safe routes to schools concept. And so, that's another thing in the short term, we've been providing some information as we've been asked on it. So, the 45th project is proceeding forward. We should get the field check review back probably in 30 to 45 days and we'll have a walkthrough on the project with them. And then we'll go on to office check after that. So, with that, I'll just take any questions you might have on that project.
Any questions for Mr. Lee on the 45th Street Project? Have you done any evaluation of moving that roundabout to 10 or 15 feet? What is going to impact at all?
I haven't moved it yet. We just got the price quote last, late last week. So, I haven't, when I heard the million dollars, it's like, yeah. If it would have been, you know, $100,000, it might have been worth saying, hey, let's, let's think about it. But I figured that as large as that line is, it would be significant. But we'll get it looked at here in the next couple of weeks and we'll have a revised concept for Ann to look at.
Okay.
So, kind of, if there's no other questions on that, I'll just mention kind of a companion project with that is the Oliver RCB project. And that's a replacement of that. It's considered a bridge underneath Oliver there. When we get done replacing it, it'll no longer be a bridge anymore. The span will not be large enough to be considered a bridge anymore. But it's being paid for as a bridge replacement because it's technically a bridge right now. But we were looking at the options on constructing that. And in order to minimize the shutdown time, we're doing it as a precast section. So, that'll minimize shutdown on the project. And the plans are complete. I just need to do a final review and get the quantities put together and we'll be getting that to Ann to put that out to bid either later in April or early May. But summer construction is the plan on that project. So, jumping over to 53rd and Woodlawn, the sidewalk project, we've turned it into KDOT for field check and office check. They came back with some comments and unfortunately, last week, they came back with additional comments. So, they, we had not originally proposed any kind of construction traffic control because it's a sidewalk project. It's outside of the roadway. Well, they came back last week and said they wanted us to go ahead and show construction traffic control for the concrete trucks that'll be in the roadway while they're pouring the sidewalk. So, I wish they'd asked that question the first time they looked at it, but unfortunately, they didn't catch it on their first review. So, we, we've completed the updates to those plans and we'll have those turned in again this week to keep that moving forward. It's currently scheduled for bidding in July of 2025. So, it may be pushed back to August now at this point, but it's, the plan is still to get it in this year. The, the other thing on that one is, is again, Mr. Dean had brought up and asked me about what kind of signal control we're going to be doing at by Stuckey, or not by Stuckey, but by Isley over there, the Woodlawn Crossing. Because we, at this point, are only showing just a regular crosswalk with signs. He asked about incorporating some kind of signalization in it. And since that wasn't part of the original request to KDOT, that funding isn't going to be available to include in that. And I talked with Ann about it. And the good news is, is like doing an RRFB, which is a rapidly repeating flash and beacon, beacon. That's the cheapest way to bring attention to the crosswalk. And it's just you walk up, you push a button and it'll start flashing for about 30 seconds. And the FHWA guidelines say that using that reduces accidents by 47% and it reduces driver compliance on stopping at crosswalks by 98%. So, it's significant improvement and people noticing, hey, there's something I need to be paying attention to and actually people stopping instead of blowing through it when there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk. So, that's going to be the recommendation for it. Just a preliminary look at the equipment, it's less than $10,000 to add it on at a later date. So, without getting into all the federal grant guidelines that you get into, if you try and make a late change, we're recommending that get done as a separate project later. We'll go ahead and put all the regular signs up that you normally would to crosswalk. It would be just replace the signs right there at the crossing with the beacon. So, but the project is on schedule still to go out for bid this year. So, I'll take any questions you might have on that one.
Well, I'm glad it's only 10,000. I hope it's not that much or maybe a little less, but that's surprising with the price of traffic lights and such. So...
Well, and I looked online and the catch and the thing I need to do, and Tyler and I were talking about it when he brought it up, I need to do some research as far as the brands that we would recommend as far as getting down to it. Because you can actually buy a basic one for $1,200. But is it any good? Is it, how long is it going to last? And so, we want to make sure if we're recommending one, that it's one that's going to last a while. But the systems I looked at, the higher quality ones that where you start getting into audible warnings and those kind of things, it's about $4,000 per signpost. And they're solar powered, so you don't have to worry about running power to them or anything. I might mention, we're still talking with the school to help. Right now, not very good, not, not, not very productive, but we're going to continue to ask and request some assistance on this project as well. Yeah. And speaking of schools, I would want to jump briefly back to 45th Oliver, the Woodlawn Project. I know Tyler and I were talking that the thing he'd like for us to do with the project is to make sure that we evaluate that signal at Edgemore as far as whether or not it's going to meet signal warrants by the time the project goes to construction, whether or not that's something that we should include in the, in the project is to make sure to reevaluate that when we get closer to the finish line.
We at least need a pedestrian crosswalk there, right?
Yeah, we're going to have some kind of a crossing mechanism included with the project, whether it be an RRFB or a HAWK or even maybe a signal. We want to, we want to look at the options there, but we definitely want some kind of visible warning system on that. And that's been planned from the get-go.
Yeah.
So, okay. Well, the other thing I'll mention just real quickly is we do have some other projects, just residential projects we're working on. The Arthur Heights improvements at 45th and Woodlawn, you may have noticed it's been sitting for a little while where it got started and it hasn't finished. That's scheduled to start now in two weeks. They're supposed to be out there getting going on that one again in two weeks. There'll be a change order discussion on part of that work tonight and that's scheduled to start. Assuming that there's no issues with that, they'll do that work next week is what they're talking about. So, the Arthur Heights is going to be finished in late May or early June. They'll be starting the storage units shortly thereafter that. And then the Chapel Landing 5th Project, the paving started, is starting this week. So, that'll be finished up and we'll have another phase out there, Chapel Landing open for, for that. So...
Are you working the, the project with Rock Road, the bridge, Rock Road?
Oh, yeah, yeah. The 53rd and Rock, there's that little bridge north there. Yeah. And I was, I was looking at that. Ann asked me to reevaluate how much pavement removal because there's been some settling south of the bridge. And since we have to remove some of that, I'll be putting revised plans out with that in the next week or so as well. And the plan is that we'll bid about the same time as the Oliver Bridge.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, it's basically complete as well.
Good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Garver, or Mr. Lee?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr., Ms. Hamburg?
Since you're here, can you comment on the Aurora Park pavement improvement? They, they were supposed to get restarted today, if I remember right.
Yeah. So, they, they ended up, there was one additional utility that we determined hadn't gotten finished, that they had told us they were done, but they didn't. It is finished now. They should be starting in the next couple of weeks is the, is the plan. We're trying to get an exact date set up. The, we are going to give residents 10 days notice before construction starts. They'll get hangers put on their door. They'll get notified that the project is going to kick back up. So, it's imminent. Everything is out of the way and we've been working on just making sure everybody's lined up at one time. We want to get it done in one, one piece this time. So...
I received a concern from a resident there about the ditch status right now with rainy season coming. He says the ditches aren't functional. Can you comment on that?
So, lots of people have opinion on what's functional or not. There's no problems out there. There's nobody's house that's in danger. There's no flooding danger. There's no ditch failure dangers out there. There are a few spots where they put boards in front of culverts to keep erosion from going in. So, the ditches may fill a little bit more than normal temporarily, but we're not anticipating any issues. And I know that we did have one resident that during the utility relocation process, their yard got damaged. And we've spoken with our contractor and even though it's not their responsibility, they're going to go ahead and take care of cleaning up that and fixing the ruts in their yard for them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the information. The next on our agenda is citizen concerns. Do we have any citizens here to wish to speak to council? We have no courage, so we'll move on to council member reports. Mr. Dean, I'll start with you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I do have a few things. First, I wanted to thank, and I'm glad to see Marty's here. I wanted to thank Marty, our Director of Public Works for his quick communication and response for a citizen's concern involving crosswalk sign placement and stop signs needing replaced. I know those are all over town and there's, there's a list that they do a good job of trying to keep up on. But I forwarded a message from a concerned citizen and Marty got right on it and I really appreciate that response. I know that can't always happen that fast, but in this case it did. So, it's very, very much appreciated. And then Friday, April 11th, just a reminder, I think it already was maybe mentioned, K254 Corridor Development Association Meeting will actually be hosted here in Bel Air. That's next Friday at 11:30. And then lastly, I wanted to personally thank Key Chi Mayor Ashley Coleman for reaching out a few weeks ago. Although our council chose not to move forward with the proclamation, I did want to recognize her leadership along with Prevent Child Abuse Kansas for their efforts on the important issue. Many of you may also know Ashley serves as a Support Service Program Administrator for Department of Children and Families. And the work her team does along with other organizations helps to provide critical services that are much needed for public safety of our most vulnerable population, children. Unfortunately, very recently, sorry, we were reminded that there is much need and support in this continued for this arena to protect children. Many of you heard a seven-year-old, Davian Gunter Jr., who is connected to our community. He attended Isley Elementary School and was shot and killed last month. We must do better for our children. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, or Mr. David?
All I have was last Thursday, I attended the CCUA. Waste water treatment is, still having trouble with Influent a couple of weeks. Only had one exceedance on the Influent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Ms. Hamburg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended CCA on Thursday as well. Things feel a little bit more routine with the bond sale behind us. One thing I'll mention is that we didn't take official action, but the utility manager is going to put an RFP out to get that lime silo evaluated if we're going to replace it or be able to rehabilitate it. So, that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Welch?
I wanted to remind the citizens, I know it seems a long ways off, but there isn't a council election coming up in November. If anyone is interested in running for one of the three seats that will be available, they need to get signed up before the end of May. So, it's really not that far off that you need to do something if you want to be up in the election. I just wanted to make sure all the residents had a chance to know that and get done in time.
Okay. So, thank you very much. Move on to mayor's report. So, on March 20th, I represented Bel Air at the Garver Annual Montana Breakfast. And I learned that Chris Bohm has retired and is not involved with Garver, but still somewhat involved, but not as much. So, as you may have seen, on March 25th, I interviewed with a couple of local TV stations concerning the new Amazon facility coming to Bel Air. It's a great opportunity for the region in terms of jobs and reliable, timely delivery of the goods purchased. March 26th, I attended the WAMPO Open House at the 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan that you heard about this evening. And so, that was the WAMPO's outreach. Part of their outreach, they have multiple items they're doing to reach out to the public to... They have multiple items they're doing to reach out to the public to get a public input to the, the updated plan. So on March 27th, I attended the CCU A meeting as well as council member Greg David and Emily Hamburg. So we approved the contract for the BRP contractors to build the wastewater plant expansion as for an additional 1 million gallons per day. And that project will last through the end of 2027. More details will be coming on that. I did spend a considerable amount of time last week politicking with legislators concerning an amendment to the Kansas Constitution to limit property appraisals and a proposal to limit cities and counties budget growth. I opposed both of these ideas as the property appraisal issue is a shell game to fool taxpayers believing that something is being done, when really in reality it would change nothing. And I opposed the limits on the cities and counties as the idea developed into a train wreck. The last proposal on the table set an election timeline that simply was not workable with the established laws on elections and budget process. So this idea needs some serious discussion and so far, none of these ideas have, have passed. Of course, there's always the possibility of something being proposed during the upcoming veto session. And I'm advocating for an interim committee to be put together to fully develop a real comprehensive plan between sessions for consideration next year. And yesterday I did authorize a city attorney to join with Wichita and Overland Park in requesting the Governor veto House Bill 2228. If this bill were to become law, it would outline certain criteria for cities to address in order to enter into a contingency arrangement with law firms. It then allows the Attorney General Oversight to review the contract before it can be approved by the city council. To me, this is unnecessary micromanagement of city business by legislature and the Attorney General. So I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mayor Benage, and I appreciate you approving for us to join in the veto request. I gave a brief city attorney report to the council last, the last time we met. It was about the potential for HB 228 to be approved, and it was. The mayor is correct. With everything that he described, there's currently, or let me rephrase, prior to HB 228, there was no state law or anything precluded those types of contracts. Those were available to cities to use. There have been many examples of them being used. More specifically, the city of Bel Air used a specific contingency fee agreement to contract with Fullson Seifkin when it came to representing our city and other cities at the Kansas Corporation Commission. This contingency fee agreement law is interesting because it does give the Attorney General the authority to review those agreements, but also to say that those cannot be done, to tell the city that you cannot use those. He can also re, well, the office can retroactively invalidate that agreement as well. When it comes to home rule, this information was provided to the legislature. Perhaps there was a way to find a compromise. Perhaps there was a way to find ways where the cities would still have the ability to entertain those types of agreements, but that did not occur. Depending upon how this fares, any updates I will provide you with. But this is the only, only time that I know that this type of an agreement or this type of restriction has been put into law. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it short and sweet tonight. No presentation, just, we have a lot of business to get to. As Greg said, Bel Air Spring Festival Easter Egg Hunt is April 12th from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Rex Center. My daughter Lucy's got three service hours to give you, so we're going to throw down some eggs and then her little sisters will come pick them up later on that morning. Citywide Garage Sales, April 24th through the 26th. One thing I did want to touch on, Tree Board Arbor Day Event is going to be at Eagle Lake Park on April 26th this year. And I think it's a good, it's my one-year anniversary and we're trying to combine forces on a lot of different areas. And one area that we saw is the algae bloom year in, year out at Eagle Lake, Eagle Lake. And so instead of maybe doing something aside from that, we're going to combine forces and try to plant some bushes that helps with that algae bloom that captures some, some fertilizer or whatnot that helps create algae bloom. So we're going, we're going to try to combine forces this year with the tree board and what staff's seeing and, and see if we can't help natural remedies, some of our problems. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great idea. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions. The first item is this VAC 20 ordinance or ordinance proving a vacation, 25-01. So February, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this vacation. The request now comes for city council for final approval and Director of Community Development Paula Downs is will provide a short presentation available for questions. And the applicant, Representative Garrett George, is joining us via Zoom and is also available for questions. But before we get started with that, I do have a script that we need to go through because this is a zoning change. So I first need to ask, is there any disqualification declared form determined before we proceed? The hearing, does anyone in the council intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have a conflict of interest? And if no, just please say, just, just acknowledge that you don't, or if you do, please say you do. Okay, I, I assume from the responses I'm seeing that no one has any reasons to disqualify themselves. So ex parte communication, has anyone in the council received any ex parte communication, verbal or written, prior to the agenda item which they would like to share? And again, just acknowledge yes or no, okay? And it appears that no city council member is responding that they've had any ex parte communication. Next issue is protest petition. Has the city clerk received any protest petitions or written objections to this case?
No.
And city clerk acknowledges that she has not received any communications. So summary of hearing, has everyone in the council received an unapproved minutes of the Planning Commission from March 13th, 2025, which summarized the hearing of this case? And I assume everyone's seen that because it's in the packet, but just to make sure that you had a chance to review it. And it appears that everyone is responding, yes, that they have, so I'll make that part of the record. And so we're ready now for our city staff report for Ms. Downs. Please proceed with your report.
Good evening. Yes, so this is a vacation petition related to vacating a platted 20-foot wide utility easement that currently is in between Lot 7 and 8 of Sunflower Third Edition, which is generally located in the, between Webb and Greenwich off of north of 53rd. We have referred to it as Project Heartland. It is now referred to as the Amazon Building. Currently on Lot 7 or the north lot, that is where the spec building is built. They are doing tenant improvements there. The rest of that lot and then Lot 8, oops, I'm going, I'm going backwards. Oh, you, the city manager added something.
We like to see the map.
You like to see the map. There you go. It's actually the outlined lot plus the one on 53rd. So it's Lot 7 is where the spec bu, spec building is, but then just south of that, that's the rest of the property that's going to make up this project.
So it goes all the way to the 53rd?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
It does. It was submitted, I saw that. The Planning Commission reviewed all the legal considerations and what's required by code and statute. And based on the findings of facts at the March 13th, they approved this vacation project. So what I can say is that, I think there's, well, the map got removed. Okay, there's one more map. I'll talk about this really quick, but let me, there it is. So you can see Lot 7 and Lot 8 in between. It was platted originally with a 20-foot wide utility easement. Currently, there are no private utilities in there or public utilities being used in that easement. The private utility companies have approved the vacation of this platted 20-foot wide utility easement because they don't have anything in there. And then this easement is limited to these lots. It does not encroach on the property to the east or to the west. So it's contained, self-contained within the property that's owned for this project. So at this point, we've not received any inquiries or comments or questions about what is going on. There's no conflicts with any private or public utilities. And so we have recommended with all these changes, sorry. With all the those change, with all of those facts of findings being found, we find that there's no conflict and we're recommending that you approve the vacation petition.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Downs?
I have one question.
Mr. Welch.
I just want to make sure that the other lots, the utilities are able to get to them without needing this easement area.
The easement currently is limited to the confines of this, these two lots, the property. They don't encroach or extend across Sunflower Court, which would be to the west. And there's no utility easement following onto the east property.
So that didn't really answer my question. For the east property, how will the utilities get in there? They have no need to go across there? Is it going to be available?
No, they have no need to go across that property. Utilities would have to be identified if that lot is built out.
So is that lot already planted?
The lot is platted.
That lot is planted, so if there was an utility easement, it'd already be there.
If there was one platted on the original plat, I don't know, I don't know the answer specifically if they have one on the original plat.
Okay.
At this point, it's not part of the second addition. That's the, the third addition. That's a different addition to Sunflower Commerce Park, so I haven't looked at that plat.
Does that help, John?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that future development is not blocked by this, that, that they do have access to all the utilities they would need.
They would because there are no utilities in this easement. The utilities have been brought in various ways to the different lots. So short of looking at the original plat for that east property, I don't know what their easement has called out for. I don't know what public use, utility easements are available. Of course, it's, it's right on 53rd Street. It can come from all kinds of different directions.
Yeah, that's kind of my question. Is it, are those utilities available on 53rd so that they can run the north or from the street north there, which I can't remember the name of? I, I have no problem with this request as it is. I just want to make sure we're not breaking something in the future.
And they have some information to help.
Yeah, Mr. Welch, there are no utilities that need to run through that easement that we're looking at vacating in order to serve the Sunflower Second Property, which is directly east of the Sunflower Third Property. So there will be absolutely no use for this easement moving forward. There's no utilities running through there now and there's no utilities planned in the future. All the utilities for Sunflower Second, should it get developed in the future, will come further south or from the east on Greenwich Road or from the south on, or further, or from the south along 53rd. And there is additional utility work that's going to need to be done at some point in order to serve that property, the utilities that we have, particularly sanitary sewer is not built out enough to serve that. But regardless, this easement in question will not be needed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Downs? Okay, so the next thing on the script is written communications. Have there been any written communications received? Apparently, everybody is saying no. Ms. Downs is saying no, or city clerk is saying no. So let the record reflect no. So move on to applicant's presentation and Mr. George, do you have a presentation that you'd like to make?
No, sir, I don't. I was just wanting to be available in case there are any questions.
Okay, thank you. So if there are any questions for Mr. George? I do not see anyone wanting to raise questions. Next item on the script is public comments. So with anyone, we would like anyone, welcome anyone interested in this agenda item to come on podium and give your name and address and comments. I do not see any from the public, so that was, the governing body has been provided with the unapproved minutes from the public hearing held on March 13th, 2025. So there was a public hearing at that time. So if there are no citizens, applicant's response. Of course, there's no questions for the applicant, so I guess he didn't have to respond to anything. So we'll move on to council deliberations. So this is your chance to review whatever, your, your thoughts on this determined evidence. And the legal notice has been given by the publication is required. There's no private rights being, to be, will be injured or endangered by the vacation. The public will suffer no loss or inconvenience thereby. And that injustice to the petitioner, the request of the petitioner ought to be granted. Then you, as the governing body need to determine, is that acceptable to you? So your turn to deliberate, whatever you need to say.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
For all, all the reasons you listed and staff support, I'm, I'm supporting this vacation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have no issues.
Okay, thank you. So does everyone believe that these items, one through four, are shown by the present, presented evidence? And I listed those out fairly quickly, but if you have questions, I'll repeat them. Okay. Well, if there are none, we do have motions to entertain and there are three drafts put in the agenda. So entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, John. I think I heard Mr. David. First, I'll let Mr. David go first.
Motion to approve the findings of facts and recommendation of the Planning Commission for VAC 25-01. Adopt the ordinance as presented and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Welch. This is, requires a roll call vote, so I'll ask your tur, to please call the roll.
Excuse me, thank you. Mr. Greg David?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Aye.
Mr. Tom Schmitz?
Aye.
Mr. John Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Jim Benage?
Aye.
And the motion carries six to zero, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, on item B, so the city of Bel Air has around six and a half miles of sewer lines that require regular cleaning and televising to maintain sewer functions and proper flow. Sewer main damage is commonly caused by corrosive nature of raw sewage, tree roots and shifting grounds and on occasion damage caused by other utilities. Each year, staff sections off portions of the town to have sewer lines cleaned and televised. Easement machine that we're considering on this motion, on this item will allow the public works to reach manholes in residents' backyards. Our current easement machine was purchased in 1998 and needs replacement due to transmission of hydraulic failures. And staff solicited bids from three companies. Public Works Director Marty McGee is here to discuss and answer questions. So Mr. McGee.
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Council. Any questions on this? I think everybody kind of knows what's going on and what it's for. And there's a picture of the new machine that we were looking at to purchase. This is part of, this is part of the puzzle we're putting together to better our sewer systems and allow our employees do what needs to be done to camera all our lines and go from there.
Talked to the camera truck, right?
We did.
Good, all right.
I did have one question, Marty. Can you explain the dis of the two pieces of key equipment? One's a US jetting easement. It's 109,000, 110,000. And you're requesting that we approve the cheaper of the two, 69,000 approximately. What's the difference between those machines? Do you see a benefit from considering another machine or no?
Talking the key, that there's not much difference on it. This 109,000 dollar unit is a newer unit that is put out. They have not even sold one yet. To, what I was told was go with the, go with the one we're going with. To, what I was told was go with the, go with the one we're going with from the same person we bought the sewer truck from and everything else. So, and I trust him and it's local, so.
Well, good deal. Thank you for answering that. I was just curious because it's like it's hard to tell what the difference is when it's on paper like that.
When you go looking at this type of stuff, trying to compare apples to apples, I mean, it's, it's, it's not easy to do. Especially if you don't know a lot about what you're looking at and you have to burst yourself on everything. So yes, it is hard to look at. That's why I was trying to give you guys all the PDFs, all, all the information I could gather. That's what I tried to do.
Appreciate the research.
It, it looks like all of the, we, well, it looks like all the warranties on everyone I looked at is, is one-year warranty. And that's, I guess that's basic anymore. So I couldn't find any one that had over a one-year warranty on, on any easement machine, so.
So you're looking at a three-month lead time?
Yes, sir.
There's no more questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
I have mission, motion to approve a contract with Key Equipment and Supply Company for a sewer easement machine, trade-in and trailer in the amount not to exceed sixty-eight, eight fifty, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Schmidt, a second by Mr. David. Any other questions or discussion? If there are none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
I hear five ayes, any nays? That motion carries five to zero. Move on to item C. So this is a change order number one to Arthur Heights Estates. And Mr. Lee had spoke about this a little bit ago. So developers ready to proceed with construction of this Arthur Heights Estates development pursuant to the PUD. As part of the review process, Fire Department requested the installation of an additional fire hydrant to serve the development. The revised petition and resolution for this fire hydrant was accepted by the council on May 4th, or March 4th, I'm sorry, wrong month. The cost of the improvements for these projects will be financed through bond and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots in the city. Engineer Ms. Anne Stevens is here to discuss and answer questions.
So like the mayor said, this is requested by the Fire Department. They wanted it inside the fence to be able to protect and access the storage unit facilities that will be built on the west piece of this lot. So that's why we're doing it. The developer did accept the additional costs. And as the mayor also mentioned, had a petition that was approved by council on the March 4th meeting. So this is kind of the formal action approving the, the installation of the fire hydrant and expending the funds for it.
We got one fire hydrant in already.
Correct.
Good. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Stevens?
Mr. Mayor, I did have one. So, and the number seemed really high, but then I looked at the details and noticed that there's a considerable amount of pipe needed to even put a fire hydrant in. It said seventy-five feet. Can you explain, I know you kind of mentioned the outside, inside the fence. Can you kind of explain just to orient us on why so much pipe is needed to add the hydrant?
The reason the pipe is needed is because there's not water mains going into the storage unit facility.
Gotcha.
So that's why we had, it's, we're taking it from the main that's circling around the duplex area into the fire hydrant.
You're basically extending that originally.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? Here, if there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we accept change order number one for Arthur Heights Estates for additional fire hydrant assembly in the amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand, three ninety-nine and fifty-three cents.
A second.
Mr. I have a motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Ms. Hamburg. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Move on to item D. Ordinance considering impeding the flow of traffic. So the topic came up in a previous workshop. And City Attorney Maria Schrock has drafted an ordinance for your consideration as available to answer any questions. And this basically is an ordinance to prohibit people from going up the cars and soliciting for money or whatever else and, and basically cause a traffic hazard. If there are no questions.
Mr. Mayor. So I looked at the, the penalty and it just, is it just like a cross, I mean, like a jaywalking penalty or something like that? Is that what it is, I guess?
Traffic infraction.
That's a traffic infraction fine, that's already set up, all that, okay.
Driving while suspended, those become misdemeanors. This is not a misdemeanor, this is at the lowest.
Okay.
In the total pool, traffic infraction with a fine and court costs.
Okay, okay. I just was curious, thank you.
If there's no other questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
A motion to adopt an ordinance pertaining to impeding the flow of traffic as presented and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Schmidt, a second by Mr. David. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Sorry, John, I almost cut you off. So move on to item E. This is approving a contingency fund for the construction of the public works facilities. The Bel Air City Council approved the construction contract for the new public works facility on January 7th, 2025. The approved motion did not include a, any contingency amounts outlined in the bid. Staff was contacted by our owner representative and architectural firm regarding the need for contingency authorization to help position the city to not cause delays in processing, reacting, or potentially change order requests which may affect the overall construction schedule. Contingency amount of 10% was included in the construction specifications for this project and referenced in the contract. Our owner representative Kirk Jurgensen, is Mr. Jurgensen here? Oh, there he is, okay. He's here to discuss and review the process. Mr. Jurgensen.
Yes, as the mayor said, the budget includes that 10%. We're just asking that it be put into the contract so that the architect, myself, and Ted can vet the, any potential change orders that may occur to minimize your two-week delay that could be caused by when you meet. Pretty simple, pretty standard way that things are typically done. It was an oversight by myself, the architect, and some staff when we did not include that in the original contract. But again, as the mayor said, it is included in specifications that it was required that they would include that within, that would be included within the contract. Any questions?
So, Mr. Mayor, I think we discussed this a little bit, so the, with the bond, that would be included as well, correct?
Yeah, so we're, we're cash, we're, we're, we're not bonding this.
Oh, okay.
This project, yeah, it's all cash. And Kurt, you might, you might mention, I meant, this is a pretty straightforward project. We're not anticipating anywhere close to this amount, it's just.
Yeah.
It makes.
If there's going to be a large amount, it's going to be adding in some of the alternates that we didn't accept.
Which, yeah.
We think this will be just typical, smaller change orders that occur based on just conditions.
Okay.
Just to help remind, remind anyone who may not remember, this, this is, we've got a base grant to, to build this. This is, is eighty percent of the project is being caused, paced by the base grant?
About seventy-five, twenty-five.
Seventy-five, twenty-five, okay. So, so that's where this is. This is trying to just clean up some language, I think, pretty much it was over oversight.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Just, just to clarify again, so is this like approving the change orders in advance? Or we, will we still have to approve the change orders later in, in aggregate or something?
We will go through a process of receiving potential change orders that we'll review, vet, and Ted will be able to sign that. We will take then all those potential change orders when they get to a certain amount to be able to write a single change order. So we may have four or five of these PCOS on the change order. We, again, with the vetting process that we're going through, we can help speed that up without having to wait for council meeting and then authorization. So have I answered your questions, or?
You'll go ahead with the small ones, and then when they get to a certain amount, they'll come to us.
Whether it's a certain amount or X number of days have passed, if we've only had one over a sixty-eight period, we don't want to have the contractor held out, so we'll try and write one at that point. If we agree to a certain amount that we need to go to, whether it's, I'm throwing numbers out just for conversation, is it ten thousand, is it fifty thousand? We can pick that number or, or react. We might not even reach that, maybe we need to go ahead and write it because those days are starting to get kicked in there. Couple of different ways we could attack this.
So I'm just throwing out an idea, and you don't need, you do not need to act on this tonight, but on the Woodlawn project, a few years ago, we put in a, a process that change orders over the city managers allowed ten thousand dollar amount. We would expedite and call a special meeting if it was more than seven days before the next meeting so that project wouldn't, the project wouldn't be delayed because of a change order that was in excess of ten thousand dollars. City manager already has the authority to sign something under ten thousand dollars. So we could do that if that makes council more comfortable, or we could do the accumulation of change orders and bring them to the next meeting. I'm okay with it either way, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I do have some thoughts on this. So we, we are essentially preapproving the change order up to five hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred. It's right in the AIA document. And it basically says if the amount isn't spent, then it would be deducted and given back to the owner. I'm a little uncomfortable with it. The reason why is it's 10% of the project. And as has been said, this is a pretty clean project. We wouldn't expect to see that kind of change. And if we saw that kind of change, I would be really disappointed if we weren't aware of it. So, and I know Ted wouldn't do that to us. So I'm speaking a little bit, just kind of making people aware of how the contract would work versus how Ted, our city manager, and our ordinance rep would actually do it, the process. So if I hear, I'm going to repeat it back. If I hear what, what you're saying correctly, you're saying you want this money pre-approved so that smaller change orders that could impact the project upwards of one to two weeks, so to prevent a delay. Where I'm, where I'm missing out is, is why do we need five hundred thousand dollars for that? Why can't it be a hundred thousand? Why can't it be fifty thousand? And then if we do get one of those, you can go ahead and do that. And then we can have our next meeting and we can approve another fifty or a hundred thousand. Instead of, I just don't like the feeling of a low bid project. We already were to do a contractor and then we're adding five hundred thousand dollars automatically to their contract. Now, I get that you guys have a process in mind of how that would work. I just am a little uncomfortable with preapproving this large change order. I get the purpose of it, I get why you would want a contingency. I just don't see the need of it on this type of project.
Let me ask a quick question to our city manager and city attorney. I believe our ordinances, the city ordinances, do not allow you to just cartological and allow a five hundred thousand dollar change order on your own signature, even regardless of this contract. It would still, he's still limited by the city ordinance to the ten thousand dollar authorization.
Sure.
I, I, so I don't, I understand what you're saying. And I, I would agree that, that if we didn't have that shield of the ordinance there that says, city manager, you don't have the authorization to, to approve a fifteen thousand dollar change order, then he, he wouldn't do that without bringing it to council.
I guess I'm just looking at.
Is that a correct understanding?
So now we're, we're in two different fields here. So essentially, you're, you're giving me, you're giving the authorization for the project. So in one way, I, I, the way the ordinance, you're almost extending the construction costs with this. However, inside the contract, and Maria can speak, there's, there's a little bit minor and major change orders. Is it, is it all, is it all together? Or I, I know they, Kurt, maybe you can, when we were discussing this, we were talking about minor and, and major change orders. And it's kind of up to us to classify that.
What that value is, yeah.
Exactly. So if you guys say anything major would be ten thousand dollars, and yes, I would, I would come back to you. But a lot of this is a little bit the way you read the ordinance in that if you give me a hundred thousand dollars to spend something on equipment, I'm going to use a hundred thousand dollars spent on equipment. So Tyler's right a little bit in that we're agreeing with the change order for this amount. However, there's also that knowledge I have of we're not going to be approving large change orders without your consent, that kind of thing. I, I think a lot of this conversation revolves around, and Kurt, we can talk about what happens when we have a change order to the bid or the, the sheets we get when the payments come in.
Yeah, if I'm understanding correctly, we, we do see the change order with all the documentation backing that up. So again, we're vetting it between the architect, myself, Ted gets the report. And I think that's where we're at. I will address, Mr. Dean, that I will share that the architect did relay to me that he would even feel comfortable at a five percent amount instead of the 10. So we're, we're both feeling we're not going to see or expend a lot of money at this point. And again, if we needed to, for some unknown reason, if we did expend that, we could come back and ask for the other five percent.
I guess I'll respond to that. So just looking at the way we broke it down, it's not different than we saw before. It's the, the same budget for A and E and owner's rep and equipment and contingency. When you add up equipment and contingency, which is essentially something that is somewhat a contingency together, it, it seems a little bit a lot. And, and it, it doesn't feel like we're going to go two weeks without a meeting where you're going to need a decision on a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollar item. And if we do, we need to have a special meeting. So I guess what I'm getting at, what I'm getting at is our budget and the construction contract to me are two different things. They are. We have the, we have the budget. It's more of authorizing action to the contractor. And I don't like the idea of just throwing five hundred thousand dollars, 10% of the project on a project that, to be frank, I would be upset if we had more than two or three percent in change orders on a project of that type. So I, I don't feel comfortable putting that in the contract.
Would, would it help you if you, and I don't know if this changes the contract language goes, so that may be something that Maria or Mr. Jurgensen has to weigh in on, but would it help if we put in here to this motion, to approve this motion ad written, subject to specific change orders not exceeding ten thousand, or do not exceed ten thousand dollars without approval of the council?
I mean, I'd be comfortable going higher. I don't know what the number is, like if you have a, do you have a change order right now that you're worried about, like?
No, actually, the first change order we have is a credit to the project.
Do we need to approve that one?
That's good news. I would be, I'm not going to speak for the whole council. I'm just speaking from my experience. And I, I have not traditionally seen this kind of contingency put in a project upfront. Not saying that allowances or contingencies aren't put into projects, but this isn't a water, wastewater treatment plant project like we've dealt with and that we did, did put adequate contingency in. It's not the same thing. So I don't know what council thinks, but if we want to put some number on how large of a change order can go through their process before it has to come to us, that's fine. I don't know what the number would be, but it's, it could be more than ten thousand. I think that's too low, but.
Yeah, I'm just missing the point of it. If, if we're still subject to ten thousand, I don't see what this gets you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
Do we have to do this? I mean, is the fear that we, I think this council, we would, if there was an issue that we needed to approve, we would not want to hold the project up and we could get a quorum here quickly, I think. But from your perspective and the, and Schaefer's perspective, do we need to approve a contingency of some sort, 5% or some other number?
Good question. I, I think some contingency of some sort would be quicker than getting you together. I'm throwing out a number just because, Mr. Dean, of 50. Because again, we would take a lot of these, hopefully, PCOS to combine them together, which would be under fifty thousand. So there's a lot more, I would expect ten, twelve thousand dollar type funds being asked for. But to write a change order, we're trying to save some paperwork also on. But to write a change or we're trying to save some paperwork also on our side that by putting these PCOS together, we can combine to write a single change order or two or three change orders throughout that, throughout their life of the project. I agree. I want to shoot for that two or 3%. That's part of my job is to help us get there.
So let me ask a clarifying question. Are you seeing this, for lack of a better term, this 564,000 budget to be a, a budget that you are drawing against if you have change orders, but those change orders still have to be approved either through, through the city manager or the city council?
Ye- yes. We're looking to have that availability to process those change orders to be drawn against and approved through. That's what the contingency was established for.
And if you didn't have the contingency, you wouldn't feel like you had the draw there to, to draw against. You'd have to say, hey, I need a change order because I don't have the contingency place to go.
Come back and address this body to get those, to get that approval.
Is there a way to put a compromise in here that satisfies everybody?
I think Tyler, if we want to go 5% and then put with a contingency thing over $20,000 needs to come before the council. I think that can be your motion. That's how we treat it. We can sign, it wouldn't be a contract change. It's just a motion directive to me. If I receive anything over whatever amount, I'll bring back to you. I, I believe that, that's a way of classifying what I was trying to say, minor and major changes that, that we're, it sets a threshold for me to adhere to, to come to you guys.
But isn't the money already budgeted? Wouldn't, wouldn't it be simpler just to raise your level for this project?
That, that, that would be the simplest problem. That's kind of what we're trying to do here because there seems to be a lot of times it comes in at $11,000 and I have $10,000 of authority. So I'm not going to go against my authority. However, we don't want to even wait five days for that because it's, a, a, as you know, the base grant's on a timeline and, and I'm very cognizant of this timeline. And that's probably why we're putting this before you tonight. If it was a normal project that we're always known, we would just say, okay, well, any change order will come before anything over 10,000 and come before council. But we're a little more heightened to get this project done than before.
No, no, I get that. I just don't want there to be a perception that there's this slush fund that's built into the project that the contractor can just try to. I'm, I'm just trying to get at, this is a little different than we've done before.
It is.
And I think it would be better if it wasn't, we're approving 10%, 500,000 into their contract. And then we're asking for it to be deducted at the end.
And, and I know it sounds straightforward, but this is a building project, which is a little different than running a pipe through a ground to me. Kurt's educated me on a lot of different things and I'm glad he's in our corner. He's, again, because, because of the nature of this, the, the amount of lines that they have on, on certain, everything is lined out. Just like you see even a bid tab, but it's nine pages long. So Kurt's very, very on top of all the expenses, but these change, this, these smaller change orders go on that line. And it's, it works better functionally for Kurt and architects to have some sort of, that this sort of process. So we know where we're at and Kurt, fill, fill me in, but you know, say they, they have drywall as a certain line item and we, they went over on that, but the, they went under on a different line item. So it all ties back to the original project amount.
Yeah, and on your project, actually that line won't change.
Yeah.
Unless there is something within the drawings that contradicts what was established. So that drywall number should stay the same unless we direct them to maybe change the product. And that costs more than you, than we would see the change order. So for me, the building side is very, this is very typical versus what you all may see typically on your street projects. So I'm very comfortable with it. I understand where you may, you, you all may not be. I guess I would like to say, if you're going to raise Ted's, I'd like to recommend 25.
What does everybody think about just reducing the overall amount to 3%? Which is, you know, if we stay under 3%, I think everybody would be pretty happy on a project like this. What, is that okay? Is that acceptable? Do you think that's enough for you to manage the project and, and avoid delays?
But does it solve the problem if Ted's still limited to 10,000?
Well, I think this is giving the project.
Authority.
Authority up to that amount.
Up to that amount. That's where it's, so, so you're approving the total spend. So I'll, I'll be able to spend that. It's, it's when, when you made the motion for the base bid at 5,648, I can't go above that more than $10,000 or I have to come back to you. But this essentially brings the cost of the, the, the construction contract up a little so that I have authority within that to spend.
So 3% would move this number to 169,440.
If we were to approve that, I'm not saying we will, but if we were to approve that, it would still be able to, if, say we spend only 100,000 of that, that additional amount could deduct as a deductive change order at the end. If I follow the way the AIA contractor.
Yes, it would still be a deductible, whether at three or at the 10, it's still deductible.
And I certainly don't want to, to cause some more issues or delays. If that's sort of a happy medium, maybe that's an option for this particular project. I'm not saying that that will be a standard going forward, but that might make sense for this project.
I'm still missing it. So he brings, so he approved 100,000 or 150,000. He still brings $20,000 change order to Ted and you can't approve it, right? Without coming to the council?
If, if you make the motion to approve the, the contingency, that would raise my, that would raise the cost. Think of it as buying a piece of equipment.
Okay, for this project.
Yeah, for this project. Only, yes.
Okay, that's the way I like to see it. Yep. So all your construction directives could total up to that number before it was actually considered another change order is really the way it would function in the contract. I'm just speaking out loud. That may be a, a potential just to lower the percentage to what we feel comfortable spending over the base number.
I think, I think you just said it, but we would also make our motion, we're raising it to 25,000 just for this project. It stays 10 for anything else you're spending, or you can't really dice it out that way.
Oh, you can't, once you give the authority, I'm going to have the authority to spend it. If you wanted to make some sort of more handcuffs on me, that would be your motion to anything over 25. Then I would be, I would read the motion and say, I have to come to you, so.
So let me restate that so that if we approved an amount, it would be in the contract as a change order and you could spend up to that dollar amount. And then if you went over that dollar amount, or if you knew you were going to, you would have to come to us.
Correct.
And ask for another change order to be approved, whatever that amount.
Whatever that amount is, correct.
So what I am hearing is there's two separate issues. There's a project authority issue and then there's a Ted's approval issue. In this case, if we approved the contract being raised, that sort of goes away, at least up to that amount. But we probably do need to think about raising Ted's in a separate, maybe in a separate discussion at another time. I just wanted to restate that. I think I'm following.
Or you could do both.
Yep, you could do both in one motion.
Do 3% in 25K.
Right.
He has to come to us above that when he's, when he's spending that extra.
But if we do that on here, we would not want to approve the change order. That would be a different way of doing it. We would not approve any change order if we wanted to just do that.
No, I think Tom has it right. So my, my spending authority would be a completely separate part of our ordinance. And I was just throwing out, if you approved a 5% contingency and then, but inside your motion, you say, however, Ted has to come with us over 10, 25,000, then I'd have to do that. It's just more chains on the motion.
I think we should limit Ted separately from this 10% question. And I brought this up in the past. I think we're approaching the point in time where Ted's limit of 10,000 is probably not adequate.
Sure.
Agreed.
It'd be good to get this project on its way instead of waiting for another motion to get Ted changed for everything. Rather get it all done for this one, just so we can move on.
I agree. Kurt, do you think 25, in, in your experience on these types of projects with change, with seeing change orders? Do you think we're still going to have the hiccup of needing to have special meetings on any individual change order? If we put those chains additional around it?
It doesn't feel like it. It just, to me, the project's very simple. It's not a complicated project. There's not a lot of potential hiccups there. So I think that would be adequate.
So I'm going to suggest you, you read the motion as it's written. You can put in the numbers that you want. If you want it to 3%, it's 169,440. If you want to do a different number, then you have to do the, do the math. But add to the end of that, subject to any change order exceeding $25,000 must be approved by the city council.
Okay.
I kind of think we ought to limit that to $100,000. If, if we get to that point, we can add more later.
It's true. That's true too.
Remember, I'm not making the motion.
Is that your motion, John?
Well, I just wanted to throw that out before somebody motioned for 250,000 or whatever they think. You know, I'm, I'll listen to anybody's argument.
All right.
Okay, nobody's arguing. I will make a motion to approve a contingency fund of $100,000 for the construction of the public works facility and limit Ted's ability to $25,000 signing authority and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Welsh, a second by Mr. David. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing done, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 I hear five ayes. Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Counsel.
Appreciate it. All right. The next item is, hopefully this is a short one. So annual en banc meeting of the CCU A. So at the March CCU A meeting, CCA attorney Russ Hazelwood suggested that if the members and board agreed, the en banc meeting could be waived. For the 2026 budget, this may be appropriate since the budget will look very similar to the 2025 budget. As we collect data, the 2027 budget dynamics will start to change. So waiving the en banc meeting for 2027 budget may not be appropriate. So this is just a simply a motion to wait, to authorize the waiver for this year, the 2026 budget cycle, which we're starting right now. And we need to get that completed by June so the cities can be doing their budgets. And there's draft motion there if you want to read, make that motion or if you have any discussion, we're certainly open for discussion as well.
I want to throw out a comment from last year's meeting. The budget had things down to the penny because he just did a straight percentage increase and nothing was rounded up to allow for any kind of slop. I'd like to see that budget a little bit, in a little bit better shape, I guess is the word. That's not quite exactly the right thing, but I'd like to see.
You're saying, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks then.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that and I'll make that suggestion to the city, to the utility manager.
We really didn't accomplish much at that last en banc and if things aren't changing, I, I am agreeable to waiving the meeting.
Are you making the motion, John?
Well, if nobody else is saying anything. I'll motion to authorize CCU A to waive the annual en banc meeting of this, of the CCU A members as required in section 13.1 of the CCU A bylaws adopted on 5/26/22 for the 2026 budget, similar, subject to a similar waiver by the city council of Park City and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
That motion by Mr. Welsh, a second by Mr. David. Any questions or discussion? There are now, a call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Next is executive session, and I think we need a 45 minute session. So I'm going to ask for a five minute recess, restroom breaks and such. And then we'll move into executive session.
I motion to recess for five minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Ms. Hamburg. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Recession for five minutes.
Okay, I'm going to call a meeting back to order. Held an executive session. No binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item 12B. City manager performance review. Need about 10 minutes for executive session on this.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to recess into executive session to discuss the city manager's performance review. The discussion will be pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The meeting will be for a period of 10 minutes and the open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 9:47 PM.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, second by Mr. Dean. All payers say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries four to zero with Mr. Welch being cut off on video. Executive session for 10 minutes. Executive session for 10 minutes.
Can John hear us now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, held executive session, no binding action was taken. I'm calling a meeting back to order. We're ready to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm gonna make a motion to recess into executive session to discuss the city manager's performance review. The discussion will be pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The meeting will be for a period of 10 minutes and the open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 9:47 PM.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, second by Mr. Dean. All in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. That motion carries four to zero with Mr. Welch being cut off on video. Executive session for 10 minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I don't think this needs to be talked at that workshop. That sounds like a loaded agenda. But I think at a future workshop, I think it'd be good to review and discuss our proclamation review and approval process. I just think it'd be handy. I think there's been some things that have happened locally that I think it'd be good to review that and maybe make some potential adjustments, but we need to discuss it, I think, in a workshop to kind of learn more about how we go through that.
Okay.
Again, not a high priority. Doesn't have to be the next workshop. That's plenty to do next workshop. So, just a future item.
All right. Good. Any other things to talk about for workshop?
One other thing I was gonna add, just why you mentioned those boards, is the walk bike group or the active transportation group has been pretty outspoken about wanting to be more engaged and I think it'll be great to have some of them with us. So I'm excited to see that. And one other thing that did come up during the comp plan workshop, the en banc that we did with the planning commission, was the Parks and Rec plan that we had done, the concept plan. And again, this is another citizen engagement thing, if we want to push some of those things in the planning stage that, you know, citizens should just be aware that we're open to having more citizen engagement and maybe the Parks and Rec is something that could be a separate group, even if you're not interested in walk bike, that might be worth serving on. So just another thought I throw out there for citizens to understand how they might be able to get engaged.
Okay.
And for future, May, we should have comp plan, future use workshop, and then we need to look at our water policy. That's also on the May workshop. So a couple of really thick workshops coming up in the next two months.
Water policy, is that rate study? What's that?
No, everything that goes into running a water and sewer utility.
Gotcha. Perfect. Sounds like some fun stuff in the next few months.
Yeah. All right. If there's nothing else to discuss, we'll move on to item 14, adjournment.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
I have motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. Schmitz. All in favor say aye.
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 Pose, same sign. And if you're opposed, too bad, you get to stay the rest.